It says you're alive.
Not a live.
All right, all right, ladies and gentlemen, we can call this, uh, work session in order for tonight. We had, of course, the board members and staff here as well as the commissioner of revenue. Mister, Mister Toad, do you feel like giving an indication?
Sure.
All right.
It's a great pleasure to have him and follow him come to陪你tonight and give him thanks, Lord Jesus, speech and everybody in this room and abroad in our county, Lord. We ask that he be our directors and make the ultimate decisions for us, Lord Jesus. And we just thank you and pray you for every single day that we have, every moment that we have. And more importantly, Lord Jesus, we thank you that if we know individually where we're going, then it's even better than it is here. In Jesus' name we ask and pray.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Appreciate that. And if we could stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank y'all very much. All right, was there any amendments to the agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda, please. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, um, first item on the work session is the Prince Edward survey.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, I think at one of our meetings or work session, I'm not sure, we asked Miss Hudson to come here and see if she gives a little more in-depth discussion of what we dealing with with the Prince Edward boundary line adjustment. And, um, and listen to see what she has some ideas and y'all got any questions clear?
The first thing I would just like to say is, we asked the legislature about them adjusting the boundary. They were unable to and they gave us a couple of options. Have we heard from any citizens with one stay on our side?
Uh, they're, they, they recommended if you wanted to go deep, well, it's, and it's not, it's the general summary will not touch it.
Right.
But, but they did recommend and we didn't have enough time to do that and, 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 and Ms. Kelly was, would have been glad to help us. That maybe we should look at getting, what you're saying, like a petition to say, hey, we've been paying taxes, we want to stay where we are.
Particularly with children that are in school.
Right, right.
You know, somebody that's just waiting for work every day, just gotta go to make a tax. I just hadn't, had anybody heard from anyone that this is affecting?
Yeah, I mean, from the beginning, there was people that came forward and they've expressed it. And I feel confident that it, uh, if, if presented with the petition, would sign it and more than express that again. Because it is, it is a lot of that. They're saying, I was born and raised in Nottaway, my kids went to Nottaway. I paid my taxes in Nottaway. If I call the squad, it's Nottaway. If I call the fire department, it's Nottaway. I don't care who sticks a sign in my yard, I'm still in Nottaway.
So there are some votes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is that I read in that email was from the, uh, really aware that each county could appoint a commission to...
Correct, there was a commissioner or you could go through the courts.
You give it through the courts.
Yeah.
So it's, it's all the options, but they're not gonna touch it.
How many counties are we talking about?
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
Integrate this first.
Okay.
So the, we, you had surveyed, Prince Edward County had surveyed done?
They're working on it now.
So what's the purpose of having a survey done if the citizens are likely to point to what candidate you deleted? While they spending the money to have the survey, what's gonna change the line? The line is the line, correct?
The line is the line, but I don't think Prince Edward is giving them an option. Like, we're talking about here maybe doing a petition. I don't think Prince Edward gave any of them that option.
I'd like to see the citizens stay where they want to stay.
Yeah, I would too.
However, the line is the line. If they're doing a survey and my property line is my property line, your property line is your property line, we gotta abide by the line.
Right, well, let me ask you.
Now, we can have exclusions, say we abide by the line, but our kids being on Nottaway school. And I just, I for my kids, potentially go to Nottaway school, is this a possibility? And I think Prince Edward would have to agree with us in wanting them to stay because still the line is the line.
Yeah, they can petition, they petition the school a bit.
What's the purpose for the survey? And they can still be a resident of Prince Edward County and come to Nottaway.
That's right.
But would they have to take a fee?
No. I think Nottaway now is not charging a fee.
Amelia.
Just more students.
Yeah.
Amelia, Amelia charge a fee. You live in Nottaway, you can live deeper in Nottaway.
Well, all school on about, all school coming from different town.
When I was growing up, it wasn't out. If you didn't go to a private school, you did not go to a county school out of your, out of your camp.
I think some of our teachers bring their children.
Well, that's one thing that's been allowed in the past. I know that you can bring your kids with you to go to that school. And like I said, the other thing, I remember Nottaway used to have a fee, but Nottaway said, we're gonna waive the fee because they needed students. They needed the money from estate, yes, they needed the numbers. But I think, if I'm not mistaken, Nottaway waived that fee. They don't charge people in Nottaway County.
The, the other thing too, uh, Mr. Toad, since you brought that up, what I hear from the citizens that come to me, and that makes sense, is the emergency services part. Um, where they dial nine-one-one, if Nottaway is Burkeville, so they get there and it's three miles.
Right.
Now, now Rice doesn't have a rescue.
It was coming from Mahern, is what I understand.
Mahern, Old Farm, which is, I don't know.
But what, what, is it, is the ping and thing on the table so accurate that it, that it knows what dispatcher to pick up when you dial nine-one-one?
Because it's no, no. Experience, I've dialed nine-one-one for my, my daddy twice, my mom three times. Twice, Farm came, the other time Burke came.
So it depends on what dispatcher picks up. Well, I have experience on a rental farm in Dinwiddie that a fire broke out. And I called nine-one-one and Nottaway picked up in Dinwiddie County and she wanted to know the address and I gave it to her, which is a Blackstone address in Dinwiddie County. She said, I'm sorry, you'll have to call Dinwiddie. I said, can you put me through to Dinwiddie? She said, no, sir, but I can give you the number.
And, and then the, the other point is trash, so trash. So people in that area now can't take it to General Road, they can't take it to seven twenty-three, they gotta go all the way to Farm. But where else you gonna take the trash? Or, or Mahern somewhere.
No, you gotta go to Rice.
You gotta go to Rice.
You think Prince Edward?
Well, Rice, they got the dumpers on Main Road.
You think Prince Edward would share a fee with them? And let them come down dump, it's not going there. They should.
Well, see, here's the deal with that. Y'all know and I know, and I used to gripe one of the former supervisors about this. I would see people pull into the, to the station up there, uh, seven twenty-three. One day I was in there and this van pulled up and they're dumping paint buckets in the dumpster. And I'm like, get over here, you know? And you see people, it's so convenient, guys are working the prude, they just slip right in there and put their trash.
See, back in the day, Mr. Daniel, I mean, too long ago, they went by the DCA.
That's exactly right.
If you didn't have a Nottaway DCA, you didn't dump your trash.
I'll tell you what happened to me one time, I'm going to Farm and my wife's car and I forgot to dump it at seven twenty-three. So I got up ahead of the one, you know, in Rice, that's why I was pulling. No, they ran me out of there just as fast as they could. You can't dump your trash here.
But I think Christie's, uh, to, to y'all's other point, what was it, like fifty-five?
That's the total for the whole line. But my question is, and I don't know if you know this, Prince Edward, are they surveying the whole line or just?
I don't know, I just know, I saw him in front of my brother's strawberry patch Tuesday with, with, with surveying. Hurtin' Prophet.
I'm gonna take a stab in the dark and I know it's extreme. Prince Edward going after some of this thing because of the man who made the water.
I started, I'm sure.
Hey, I, I know a couple of members up there.
But they, they will, they will benefit from the tax.
No doubt.
Yeah.
I think it's like a twenty-five thousand dollar loss.
Just so y'all can see this better. So this afternoon, what I did, the first figures that I gave y'all is on the fifty-four taxable parcels from this line down to here, which starts at Morsett Mill Road and goes all the way down past Morning Star, Kerry Shop. Okay, so this afternoon I redid just Orchard. Because I'm not a hundred percent sure what all they're surveying. So just to give you guys an idea. So if we're just looking at Orchard, and these are new values. The land is one million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred. And the improvements are one million, eight hundred and one thousand, one hundred. And that's a total of three million, one fifty-two, four hundred. And again, these are the new values, and that's just Orchard Road.
That's the value of the land.
And improvements. Mm-hmm.
And that's on the new assessment?
That's the newest.
Does that consider the land use?
I did not put your land use into this, no. I'm giving, I'm giving y'all just.
True total, the true total.
Yeah, the true total. And that's just for Orchard. The first figures are for everything, like I just said, on that line. So there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, it's like thirteen houses. Thirteen parcels.
Well, let me ask a question. Is there gonna be any kind of swapping done with Prince Edward or are they?
It can be, if they will allow that.
Right, but I mean, in other words, if I got a piece of land, part of it's in Prince Edward, part of it's in Nottaway, I'm gonna have to pay in both counties.
Correct.
And whatever they assess that part I got in one county.
We, we have citizens, we have citizens doing that thing.
We did, we did.
We have a lot of them. Amelia and Mahern.
And we have some even in Prince Edward, like if you'll notice, like on this piece right here, it's on the other side of the line. But Prince Edward taxed it. So technically, if you follow this line, just should be our piece, but they're taxing it.
And if you live in, if you, if you're fortunate enough to live in a town of Blackstone approved, you can pay our tax as well as the town tax.
And we appreciate it.
And we appreciate it. Yeah, I know we do, that's you living that time.
That's right.
And you need to appreciate it.
Exactly. But this is everything. I just wanted you guys, with me, I'm a C E R. I learned by looking visual, so I thought it might help if y'all confused. I thought it might help the new members that have not seen it, at least get an idea of what's going on.
I'd sure like to help the citizens in what they want to do. But I don't know if it's an option for them or not, if they get land survey.
Well, Bo, you had said before, I think the night that Christie had come in, that, that you didn't believe that somebody would, that, that the commissioners of revenues would do that, just agree here and agree there. But that's essentially what we would be asking if they're gonna put this line.
Yeah, I can't believe they do that because it's the line is the line.
Right.
What's the purpose of the line?
And we can't.
Bill, a big fan, leave the gate open.
Amelia and Nottaway did this back in two thousand.
How did they handle that?
Six, I think, they did a survey.
Okay.
And then Mr. Arnold and his staff at the time, and Joyce and Amelia and her staff at the time, they all worked together and they split the land, so it was fair.
Quite equally, equally that.
Exactly.
So they're hard parcels paying in each general?
Yes.
So was the goal of that, was someone who owned it, to pay the complete parcel to the one county where the land, land lied in both areas?
There was a certain taxpayer that, and I don't know the whole story behind it, but I know this taxpayer, I think was in Nottaway and he didn't want to be, he was close to the Amelia line and he wanted his land in Amelia.
Did they do the difference in the tax rate? Because that's why I would choose to put mine to lower tax rate.
We're lower than Amelia.
My, my understanding, Mr. Toad, I, I think a lot of it was due, um, at the time was, uh, Holly Farms.
Was that it?
Yes. Holly Farms was, machinery and everything was taxed in Nottaway and then actually I think Holly Farms was in Amelia. So that's, I think, was the driving force is what I was told.
And I know there was a, a one citizen too.
Yeah, that citizen, you're right.
There was.
The machine was in Amelia.
The building, that, that big building, I think, was actually in Amelia, but Nottaway was getting taxed. That's what I was told. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, I didn't do enough research and that, but I'm pretty sure now it's in Amelia.
We still tax.
Do we tax on all, all of it?
If you look at the way the road goes, you know, it goes by the hatchery, the hatchery's on the left-hand side and then all the big stuff. So I don't know. If you look at six, uh, three oh seven, most of that stuff's on the Nottaway side.
Is it in there? Oh, creek side, Christie. Oh, not as water.
It's not showing on here, it is.
It just seems like in the past, it's kind of like a creek, a river.
It's a son of a, it's a son of a.
Yeah.
And if you follow that, old road bed, if you follow that back to some old land, you all can find that somewhere.
Exactly, you're exactly right, Bo.
But I will tell you, we have pulled every deed for all of these. We did that last year, in, even for the Prince Edward pieces. Um, and all of these, we've always taxed since well before nineteen thirty.
This is what, this is what the response was, currently the code sets out a process for localities to settle boundaries disputes through the circuit court by appointment of commissioners from each locality or a mutual agreement between locales. So Prince Edward has not discussed anything without suddenly putting their own terms and structure.
We had one meeting that I was involved.
Tell us about that.
Mine, you'll have to tell, because I can't remember something like that.
So it was, uh, it was Costin's last day.
Last so.
Rick. Okay, so it was myself, Ms. Simmons, Christie, Ted, and from Prince Edward, it was, um, Doug Stanley and their chair and vice chair, their commissioner did not attend the meeting but wasn't fighting. All right, so basically, what they were asking us to do was split the cost of the survey. I said no. I said no, because the line's the line. You can go by the G I S. G I S got a little plus or minus fault, the line was the line. And they even told them, I said, now we just saved y'all forty thousand dollars, but they still want to go to drop states. So that's all on them right now. All right, when the line's the line, that's one thing, do you choose to fight? Because you do have the other options, but that was never brought to the table in that. It was never discussed. They want that tax revenue. That's it.
That's it, but in, in, in previous experience with G S I, again, in one incident on my home farm in Indian Club, when he shows a, there's a man on, owning part of my pond, and actually, I won't, I'm not a my person, but he kind of got, and I rent a piece of land, he got a little bit upset by it and I said, well, come on over, we need to fish you apart this afternoon. We can't get. So what, what the point is, my, my survey, my sketch said that was not accurate. So saving the forty-nine dollars, that's, uh, forty years worth of taxes right there, so that was a good thing to do. Because otherwise it would get through the money.
That's right, because if, if.
If they're trying to establish a line after how many, how many years are they trying to establish a line?
Well, and it's like I said, the big thing here, I, I think there's a precedent that's been set by using Orchard Road the way it was set up. Because you're, look how many commissioners did it that went through, that, that is separate and, and duly elected on their own part. And look how many county administrators, how many boards of supervisors sent to the two counties and accepted it. So that creates its own precedent.
Oh, and, and I went in there the other day and still got both nine-one-one markers.
That's right.
Each driveway, not away, up Prince Edward, Nottaway one mark.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Christie, but after January first, all these people that still have not been put on one side or the other, all their personal profits can be paid in Nottaway County, once again, because it was after January first.
Yeah, depending on where it was grown on January.
That's right, that's right.
We will tax them for their personal property and their real estate.
Right, yeah.
So, where's, so twenty-five will lose it?
Well, these people, at this point, we don't know if they have select, whether they've stayed or not.
Well, I think that, that's kind of what we need to decide tonight is, are we gonna pursue the option of working together or appoint commissioners in the court? But that's why I wanted to know whether there was anybody that, obviously the county would want to keep the revenue.
Right.
Both of those.
Right.
But, you know, the point of the citizens, is there somebody that wants us to fight?
I, I recall watching, I watched some of Prince Edward board meetings and one gentleman got up and this was when the electoral districts were changing. And the man was brokenhearted, he's eighty-some years old, and he said, y'all don't want me anymore, you kicked me out of my town. And we don't want people feeling that way, no.
We don't, we don't want people to feel that way, and that's what I said, we need to make it convenient for the citizens who live close to the area, but on the same token, once the survey is done, it's going to establish what county allows it.
And if you want to get technical, you're talking about that piece there that actually is in Nottaway, that Prince Edward collects tax? I don't know how it runs with government law, but I know the statute of limitations, you let the other county go after the other county for the revenue, they collect at least five, three years, maybe five. Has they said, have they said anything about wanting anyone in the month?
No, no. They want to take it in the future moving forward.
Well, that, that's, that's pretty foul.
Well, I save them forty thousand, I don't see.
They made us go cost them seventy, yeah.
Well, it is because that, that, well, and the other thing was that, a, and I'm glad someone came in under Timmons group simply because, Timmons group, we both used them for the G I S, both counties, and Timmons group has been all.
So you should be nine lives, right?
Uh, that, that's not so. I'll say it right here, that's not so. Timmons group is biased.
Okay. Well, I can tell you, from my own experience, G I S map is not right.
No, it's definitely not.
It's not right.
It just gives you a, 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 I've had hundreds come up to me before and say, look at this map and tell me what the line is. I said, we walked down in the bushes and we found us an axle or mark on the tree, that it's been surveyed, we're doing it. And a whole lot of land in the county and throughout the state of Virginia does not even have a survey. It was bought and sold upon its gross amount to the center of that creek, to that old white oak sixteen inch tree.
The old.
It was sixteen inches, a hundred years, and then you got to calculate how much they free it for.
I had a piece of property that I was selling, so purchaser was, had to get a survey, backwater survey. I was five, like five acres from G I S.
Right.
And, and.
Cause you built it out of it.
Exactly.
Right.
And I should have gone to Christie and said, look, Christie, I've been paying on a hundred and eleven acres all year, and that ain't all, tell me, I only got a hundred and six. I want my money back. That's what I'm saying.
Then you wouldn't have said that, right?
Well, I mean, why would I? Somebody else would have had to pay it on their side. See what I'm saying?
I bought two hundred acres and turned it into two hundred and one six acres.
All right, guys, I guess, I guess we.
But I didn't buy that, I bought my own, I bought my own back.
So how do we need for, to identify, we're gonna raise maybe fifty thousand dollars?
That's just on.
That's just on.
It's just on order.
That's just on order. So you're about twenty-six or seven, I think.
Yeah.
But we also address key concerns of emergency response and children in the county schools, we, we have to address. Now, last year, there was only one child.
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
And that child was high school age.
Yes.
Senior.
Yes.
So there may not be any children unless there's some little ones that have come up now to school age.
And I believe, right, the county waived that for them.
Yes.
And it was probably, you mean the school.
Yes, the school waived.
And they probably still do that, even if they're resident in Prince Edward.
Yeah, this was, uh, they were in Nottaway going to Prince Edward, if I remember correctly.
They were in.
Prince Edward coming to Nottaway.
Well, they were in what we assumed was Nottaway, going to Nottaway, but this is one of the, one that we split off.
I would say if they paying the money to get this survey, they gunhole on getting their residents on their side of the line.
Yeah, it says here that they were not interested in swapping.
Right.
And that was in June, I think, of last year.
Yeah.
I'm sure that hasn't changed since they spent.
No, because they decided to do this instead of agreeing on the G I S mom. So they, they're spending the money, they're gonna spend the full eighty thousand dollars or seventy-nine, whatever it was, and, uh, they're gonna pay that, they're gonna want to recover it, but I did not see the point in us spending forty thousand dollars and turn around losing almost thirty every year.
Right.
So I mean, it's continuous loss. So the only thing you can do different is, do you, like, like what you're talking about, do you want to go and pursue the interest of those people that want to stay with a petition, and then you gotta consider, what is it gonna cost legal fees to send it up to the circuit court?
Right, because they've, they've said, and then they're not interested.
They're not interested.
So that leaves us just the court.
Yeah.
And what court is gonna say after they show them the survey money they spent, show them the line? Unless they want to do what the citizen wants to do.
Which is what I like to do for every citizen, but unfortunately, we can, that's why we have law.
That, that's right, and I mean, it's, like I said, it's, I, I think you got a strong case because of the length of time and the number of duly elected officials that knew about this since, since back in the thirties. And like I said, even prior, even prior to that.
Well, they're not, they're not a great example of good man.
Well, and that's the whole thing, why? You see, now.
For the border act.
Bingo.
Now, they've got a, appointment of commissioners from each locale.
Right.
What if Prince Edward just doesn't?
Then I think, I think the court can ask him to, it's, it's an order. I mean, because if one's agreeing to do it and, and, and the judge accepts that the commission's gonna be installed, then he can write the order.
Well, so the first thing we need to do is figure out if there's people that want us to. Can we, so, so a letter, a notice to them?
To all those people that are affected.
That there's a petition available.
Do you want the whole line?
Yes.
From top to bottom?
Yeah, and we can just send them a letter and then ask them to respond with the response. And I think it's fair to say if we send them self-addressed step envelopes back to respond to us with, with that. And then if they do that, we, we can get a read on.
That's right, the directions.
That's right. I mean, we, we're doing exactly what the citizens want us to do at that point.
Has any, I mean, shouldn't we be talking to Prince Edward at some point or?
Well, yeah, it, it's, I, I think it's fa- fair and, and cordial and transparent to absolutely let Prince Edward know, this is what the boards decided to do, these notices are going out. I mean, we're trying to do, we're not gonna do an end around on them, we're just.
Send them, you know, send, send their commissioner to write me a letter. You understand survey is being completed, you contacted our taxpayer.
Maybe Mr. Bowman would help people.
See what we need to.
John, get a direction from our commissioner.
And she's new, their commissioner, Crystal, she, she worked in the office previously and then she won this past election.
You could, you could send her a copy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think she needs a copy too, because I was left out of the loop of all of this until citizens started calling me and asking me what's going on. I, I don't know, you got me.
Like I said, we're not gonna use those same end around tactics.
Are they, are they notifying the citizens that a survey is taking place, or they, this survey is showing up on the property and nobody knows?
No, all the citizens got letters.
From?
From Hurtin' Prophet.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, I don't know.
Hurt Prophet.
It was Hurtin' Prophet that sent them letters, and then it was also put in the local papers.
Okay.
So it was in the Crewe Artful Journal, I know, but I don't know about the.
It was in the Journal, right there?
I mean, we're just, we're just not gonna participate with anything nefarious and we're not gonna do, regardless of how it happens, so.
Yeah, because they spent, spending the money to get the survey and they weren't getting the land survey. I was just hoping that it would backfire on them and we'd pick up more land and we, which it could very well.
And it could.
It could, they're here in somewhere, it could.
I mean, it really could.
That's why I asked where anybody wanted that, or what that old road bed was.
Yeah, we'd have to look, I'm.
Well, they, that's what survey has been doing.
That, exactly. Tim, Timmons issued to part of the. It's, it's, yeah, that's them.
But I'm not sure it'll change that, because they.
I don't know if that's gonna change, but so much, it might change some through. But if they're not interested in swapping, that's what I wanted to work with and want is.
I don't think they're interested in swapping, otherwise they would do the survey. They just say, okay, let's work this thing out and save us money.
That's right.
At least they'll have time to swap, they must have swapped.
They've been swapping, haven't they?
Not with, I don't swap without survey.
How about me?
No, I mean, but they, this is, this swap was done with Dallas.
Oh, well, what they did back then, I don't know, Christie does not swap without surveys.
I don't think none of us was born when this thing happened.
Exactly, exactly, man. Exactly, I'm not.
We're gonna send, we're gonna send, we're gonna send letters to the citizens and a letter to the general.
Yeah.
You know what, see, with your book?
Definitely. If y'all want to, what do y'all think? Should we, not a paid advertisement, should we send the, um, if we want to, do we want to copy the local papers and on it too?
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
All right.
So I would just make mention to the editors of the local paper, maybe they'll put it on.
Yeah, because we're not paying for the ad house because it's, it's no.
Nottaway is exploring.
That's right.
While Prince Edward is having survey done, it's determined.
Right.
Letters and twenty-seven, forty-seven. And some of the people who see multiple, see they got in the group sort of.
What if it's in the paper? It's public knowledge, it's that form.
That's right, that's right. As I said, we ain't gonna do nothing to embarrass, we're not gonna play that type of game, we're just gonna stay on the up and up and just.
It's gonna be what it's gonna be.
Definitely.
And if we spend too much time on it, we're gonna be beating the dead horse.
We have the name and addresses to, to you? All the citizens?
Yeah, I guess, I, I, I really like to stay.
I would say, I would say, I would say the commission, I would say the envelope should be from the commissioner.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
That's what I would say.
So I just need somebody to help me with, with, on these letters, so.
We'll, we'll do that.
Okay. So if y'all can help with that, then I'll make sure all the letters get sent out, I'll send y'all the rough draft, y'all will look at it, and then once it's approved, then we'll mail them out.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Christie, just a quick question, do you think the, um, uh, historical marker of the weed claim that all these years, Burke's Tavern, is part of Nottaway County, is it possible that's in Princeville?
Where is it right there?
It's not.
That's ours.
Yeah, that structure and all, even by the G I S, and Princeville Greek, cuz that was one of the things we asked them.
Where is it at on that?
That is.
Do you know where that thing is at right there?
I know where the sign is, it says Prince, Nottaway Line, but it's, it's right there.
Yeah, it's somewhere over in here, cuz here's Burke's Tavern Road.
Yeah, the structure and all, it is in Nottaway.
Right. Which is right in, right, right.
That's right.
It's a square block.
Uh huh.
Yep.
Close.
It's not this.
It's real close.
Well, but then again.
But it might be here.
Is that?
Then again, guys, well.
If the survey goes.
This ain't no survey, this is a line.
Right.
From the G I S.
But if it goes this way.
Then it's, then it's odd.
Right.
If they come, if they come through that building, if they come right there to the center of that building, then it's both down.
Yeah, and in that, in that meeting we had with Princeville, they agreed that Burke Tavern is in Nottaway?
They did, they agreed.
With that, but they agreed to that with that survey.
Right, they looked at the G I S.
Yeah.
But I don't think they.
Yeah, this is where you come.
That would, that might be the one, that might be the one that they go bump.
They might dirty. Or they might go right through the middle of it and say, y'all are the drivers that collect taxes, y'all do it.
Yeah.
But we want you to know the line goes from the east one to the west one, man. That's where Mr. Jones probably will go down this way, then he will lie.
Yeah.
But that doesn't even touch the line, if I remember correctly.
No, it didn't. Even with the default in the line.
It's moving close.
It was, it was.
Okay, okay. Was that all y'all had on that survey then, or?
I mean, that's really all I had, I just wanted to lay this out, so y'all could look at it and we talk about it a little bit and see where we could go.
So that one.
If we can do anything.
The board members, everybody comfortable with the direction we gonna go now?
Yes, sir.
Michael Christie, thank you so much. I greatly appreciate that, that information, your work on this and the work that you, you be doing. Um, the audit results.
Mr. Chairman, the, um, there was a miscommunication, when they, the, the audit result, the audit came in on a Friday, and, and I got word late, at the, at the end of the business day. A citizen had asked about it, um, and of course Monday was a holiday, the office closed, the citizen required again. And I talked to the citizen who required, and I said, do you mind, let, let me get it to the board's hands before, I mean, but that person could have asked anytime, you know? And, and that, that person yielded and said, oh, yeah, I understand, you want the board to look at it. So Ms. Kelly just sent it to you? And I, nobody has studied, but I, I do know we'll probably have to have some kind of conversation about it.
Sure.
But, but anyway, it should be in your, in your inbox somewhere. And, and Ms. Kelly, we got a hard copy in here?
Yes, I thought I put it on your.
Oh, you put it over here with me?
Oh, was it just one, Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Oh, Daffy Cat already.
You hoarded.
I was up there, and I didn't get one.
You, the, and that's the question, do you, everybody want a hard copy, or you, okay, some of you want, I don't really wanna waste a lot of, how many pages, like two hundred pages?
Yeah, probably, but I don't want.
Okay. But, but anyway.
See, that was mine right there, I'm gonna share it with you.
Okay. Alright, so, any, if anybody wants a hard copy, she can make one. We don't wanna waste.
Yeah, that took.
Our phones were down today and I couldn't get any emails, so.
And the next step is to share that with Daffy Cat, cuz that's one of their requests.
Yep.
So, I, I will get that done tomorrow.
Right, and that, that just brings up a curiosity question. I know, I know I didn't know the agenda, but we're talking about the audit, so I don't think we're straying too far off. But, um, I, I know the previous board, I can't remember if we discussed it too, but when we looking at going ahead, moving forward with R S Ps for the auditor, to audit, to audit, basically, that what we were planning on doing.
Yeah, so, 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 so the audit you're looking at is last, is. What were you?
Ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Right, so now we gotta go July one, twenty twenty-three, auditing, so, uh, uh, yeah, we understand it, it stands time to put the R Ps out of that now, um, to see if we can get a better price.
Right.
That is the next step.
Okay.
But we didn't wanna put the R P out before we got there first off.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Yeah, cuz they were so far deep, they were so deep into it anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
Good night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all we had on the audit?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's just, that was it.
Okay. Alright, the county pay period.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, I think I've come one of the board members that all wanna talk about that tonight, um, or do you wanna table that for a later work session and get through the budget process and start looking at it? But all I know about.
We have a general discussing.
Yeah, okay.
Do we know, do we know how many employees are interested in that?
That's what we need to gain.
Okay.
I think you do a cer- survey with the employees.
But, but Kelly, have we done that before?
The school did.
Somebody said that they thought.
The school did, the school did it, and because, in twenty, when I was, when I ran in nineteen, um, several of the school teachers that was in the district was like, I like to do this. I know there was a hiccup, like right at the end of the year, there's a forty-five day period or something where they weren't getting paid. It was like they get paid on December fifteenth and January thirtieth.
They can speak.
Yeah.
I guarantee you, that's, that's a long time.
Yeah, so, um, and I mean, I, I get it, you know, it's like, you know, some, some made the argument, it's like, well, they know what's coming and they should plan for it. And I mean, good point, but, but still.
The fact of the matter is, being in the rental business.
Yeah.
Just for instance, if you got somebody that, that's a employee of the county, whether it be a teacher or a landfill employee, and they gotta come up with a security deposit, first month rent, and they already getting paid two weeks later.
Yeah. Well, you, you.
I would never dream of taking a brewery, unless he said, look, I, I can budget my money, but I buy y'all holding my money.
Right, what you are talking about, you, you got taxes due first of the summer, county taxes.
Right.
You also talking about the holidays. And, but like I said, you get, if you wait till the middle of the month, I think you might in- incur late fees on your taxes.
But you have to look at the whole payroll process.
The costs.
Steve and I met today, personal finding, it's going up, new, up to you, but there's a lot of in-house changes that will have to occur that would it benefit the feud, and I talked to several and said, they don't care.
Right.
Once a month's fine. But since the school is doing that, they're paying now.
But that's what it is in that county, right, two weeks?
No, once a month.
Once a month.
They can pay once a month.
Yes, sir.
Every county employee once a month. Now, that, that leaves me to this question. So you got overtime benefits, anything over forty hours, forty hours per week, or eighty hours per two weeks, or is it a hundred and sixty hours a month when they start overtime?
I'm not sure on that.
It can't be by selective, by when you want to pay it.
Right.
Yeah.
It's forty, it's forty, once you go over forty hours, you gotta pay overtime.
If you're, if you're non-exempt.
You're non-exempt. Right, if you exempt, if, if you exempt, you're more of a salad, part, part, you can.
You guys can just.
You gotta swallow.
And that's something.
I thought, I thought it was eighty hours a week. I think you got that out, but it can't go over that.
It depends on what our policy says, and that's the problem, we don't have a policy.
Yeah.
We have a, we have a personnel handbook, it was given to me, that y'all have to approve, okay? But, but we, we haven't approved it yet.
They ain't got a H O B to do with the state law then. If the state law says you got to pay a man forty-one, that's the reason when my wife was sixteen, working the food line, they would not let her work for thirty-nine hours, cuz if she hit the forty-eight hour, they had to give her mental care. So that's not, and you can't take in thirty-nine over to next week, thirty-nine.
No, you work, you work forty hours, you supposed to get paid time and a half. If you're, if you're a non-exempt employee.
If you're ten ninety-nine employee, you get no money, that's exactly right, I'm not a difficult.
So, so, so what's your question again, let me ask?
My question is, if somebody works, forget about the forty hour man, what about the benefit, it's like your food line. You keep them under forty hours, you don't have to offer them benefit.
I think it changed though, did it? It's like.
Did it rock down?
Yeah.
It's a state, it's a state law.
If you, if you work, if you work an employee over twenty-nine hours.
Maybe twenty-nine hours.
If you work more than twenty-nine hours a week, you have to give them benefits.
So over forty hours is time and a half?
I did pay low, the part-time people, and full-time, for the state. If you're a fifteen hundred hour, is what.
For the year?
Basically, for the year.
Okay.
You cannot go over, and some of them we did, they went over forty, but the following week they didn't, it depends.
We did, we did it different at Piedmont, you worked over twenty-nine hours? You, you had to justify why you did that.
Twenty-nine hours.
But as long cumulatively, is you don't go over fifteen hundred hours.
Yeah, I got you, for the whole year.
Alright, well, see, that, that's one of the things that could happen with the, with the personnel policy, if we wouldn't follow the state code or something like that, or if you pick up.
But we have to define that, our, our policy, which Steve reached out and we got the document, and then talking about it. We've gotta review it, we need to amend it.
Mm-hmm.
But in a doc, and once we have that policy, then we can move forward with all of this. But we also need to talk to the people who do the payroll to see how it's gonna affect our tax reporting, and it's a lot of things.
Yeah, what is the additional cost, or what's the additional workforce that I have to go with?
If there's more people that wants paid more than once a month, then they need to get additional staff, they need to upgrade, whatever they need to do, and they need to do it, because that's what they need.
Right.
If these, if these citizens want paid more than once a month, then they need to have that out.
Well, we can figure that out with survey then.
In a majority.
So, 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 okay, so, so, so the direction is do a survey. Just wanna make sure, do a survey to see if you wanna get, remain and paid once a month or twice a month.
Of non-school system county.
Yes.
Non-school system. No, no, okay, non.
But here's one thing I would like to fix. It, oh, is the county jammed up in December like the school system is on that thing? Alright, what, I wanna fix that, so that's not that forty-five day lag.
Well, see, the thing with the county is they're, they get paid on the fifteenth of the month.
Mm-hmm.
So they get the fifteenth of December, they get the fifteenth of January.
Right. Yeah, and see.
They don't have that, they don't have that offer, they got their regular.
Alright, so the county employees have that once a, okay, alright, as long as we have that.
And the, uh, maintenance people and everybody for the school system also all have.
Okay, okay.
So Steve, let me ask you this, so going back to the overtime, do we got the county employees that gets paid hourly wage?
That, I'm, that is. Well, yes, we do, we, we, we have, Willie, Willie's hourly, right?
So it would, it would.
Well, what do you, Mr. Chairman, let me see what she spelled something, hold on a minute, just hold on a minute, let me. Oh, well, go ahead, go ahead, that's okay.
There was a meeting with the constitutional office, and, and all of them agreed that, that once a month, they prefer that for their departments.
It was the constitutional. So we did do a survey now?
Well, it was just during that meeting, it was just, it was Tammy, it was Treasury, it was Christine, it was Sheriff. And they, they were asked how they'd like to be paid, they were, they were good with once a month.
Yeah. The reason I voted that so much.
The school system bought up to me when I was knocking on a few doors.
Yeah. They said that's one thing we'd like, and it was a county employee, we'd like to get changed, we'd like to be saved, and that was just one.
And, and, and that's what, my next question would be, okay, so say we do a survey, let's say it's sixty, forty.
You gotta go with your job, yeah.
Okay, so sixty, forty is sixty, says they wanna keep it as is. I think, I think you'll find out, anyway, but what, what, what?
It's school system.
What, what, so, what's, it's, it's, so what we asking, what you asking is, don't, don't, forget about the constitutional officers, go to the employee.
Yes.
For the survey.
The school, Mr. Abrams asked, and I would know that school system cut their own payroll, can't they, correct?
But you can't, you can't supersede the constitutional office, they have their own policies, they don't have to.
We did that today. We, we, we have, they have, like, they, they can have their own policy.
We can write policies, but they don't have to follow it, they can have their own.
But they gonna go along with it.
Well, yeah, well, the only ones here then would be the, uh, like the landfill there, cuz the sheriff said leave it.
Sheriff law comes to.
Yeah.
He said it didn't make no difference in one way or another, but the majority of it definitely wasn't leave.
The landfill personnel, they're some of them out.
All they must own our. Oh, you're talking about the, not, not landing convenience.
Yes, yeah, we were talking like the full-time, like, but you only talking about handful of people.
Well, these people, let me ask another question, are these, for example, Shane, I mean, L R A. Is he a contracted person?
No, 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 yeah, he's, he's out.
He's an employee of Nottaway County?
That's right.
But he still, he still.
That's tricky. It, 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 I don't, I don't think his check says L R A, it says Nottaway County.
Right, well, yeah. But what I'm saying is, he's, he, he's not out before overtime. I don't think.
You're correct, Anthony.
Yeah, we get your D. Do the survey, and get the constitutional officers, cuz I saw it, forgive them, they, they got control.
Look, it's a, it's a constitutional officer, it's already said. I don't know if the survey is gonna accomplish anything.
So the discussion, it, you can tell the people that brought it up to you, we brought, you know, we discussed it, we can research it further, but at this point, since the school system isn't a part of our pay plan, then it changed the scenario a whole lot.
Oh, it did, cuz that was the majority of the paycheck.
Okay.
Ms. Ms. Kelly, you think you could find the, the sheriff of the board, where they had that meeting and the results taken? Or is that too much digging, you gotta go back to nineteen ninety?
It wasn't, it wasn't. It was the national, it was, it wasn't.
It wasn't, okay. Who, who was the county administrator at the time?
She was ten, it wasn't that long ago. And also as to taxes, there's, there's a program, I'm not sure how many people know about, but the county can't withhold party, you have, you request them because I have to withhold so much of your paycheck each month, to pay towards your taxes, so we're gonna take advantage of that, so that they know.
Oh, that's good. So it don't hit you at the end of the year. Yeah.
Also, county employees have that.
And Mr. Lawrence and I can review this when we meet personnel, and we can always get our policy and we can amend it, we can review it everywhere.
We definitely need to get the policy in place. That, that's, that's a long.
This is a building here, a lot of cops.
And then, and then you do that. I'd still be interested in the county, our employees, residents, striking overtime time and a half. Doesn't do it for a week, for a month. There's a law.
So you still work, work your time, right?
We paid it to store every two weeks.
We paid it to school every two weeks, and they told us, at that time, the C P A said, you can take eighty hours, but employee can work six hours one week, twenty hours next week, you still don't family overtime, because they was under the eighty hours within two weeks.
Okay.
If I want to say.
Yeah, I follow.
Keep it.
Yeah.
You think this is complicated, if we ever had to do full paid rescuing and fire, that's complicated. Because they work twelve hour shifts and twenty four shifts and that's.
Yeah, but, but they got a criteria on it somewhere.
Alright, listen, alright, this is kind of, alright, well, if we good on that, then, uh, the solar discussion, alright? Um, Mr. Chairman, this is always Mr. English's favorite subject, but Mr. Zodi, I like the phrase a little bit. Mr. Zodi has gotten some information, and I'm gonna deal with him right now, and then we open the discussion about the next steps.
I uh basically told everybody, uh, we're, we're going to allow once a salt and the public influence project.
I didn't even do that.
He didn't, he said, I don't know. He talked, he talked in someone.
See, I, I, I know I was a part of school.
Yeah, well, that was on.
Yeah, basically, what I did, I just took the notes, I, I could write.
Oh, I.
But, um.
That's pretty much the notes, I think, of what you heard in the public hearing, is that right?
And what I did, I did a little extra, I was really impressed with Kelsey Wrights, um, she also goes by Kel- uh, Kelsey Redman.
Yes, okay.
She's an engineer, uh, with Timmons, um, but despite that, she's a hooky, but I put that in the back of the packet.
I'm glad I wasn't the only one to call that, not the hooky comment either.
But the, um, but I think it's just important to consider a lot of work she's saying, she's not totally against it, um, she just thought, you know, there's could be room for technical improvements, and that's the last, um, what it says, Wrights attachment at the four pages there.
So one thing, and I know you're all, you're all trying to solve this, so at the, um, I went to the C R C meeting the other, the other day, and a lot of county administrators in it, and, and we had some lively discussion a little bit after the meeting, if this Senate bill passes, my understanding is the empowerment is taken completely out of our hands, like, you know.
Just on a large scale. It's not, it's not completely out of your hands.
That's right.
It's still gonna reflect your ordinance on things that you want, it's, the amount of solar that you cannot, we have, the, the amount of energy that we use, it's in our ordinance, that goes away, the forty acres goes away.
About the setbacks?
No, as long as it's reasonable.
Okay, but the, the county, the other county administrators told me, you, you want to take those.
Well, that gets into what's reasonable, it's not, because, because other counties.
Somebody set a precedent at some point.
Other counties are two hundred, other counties are two hundred fifty feet and a hundred feet.
Everybody's saying eight hundred feet, sorry, eight hundred, the eight hundred feet is, is an extraordinary setback.
It is.
And it's extraordinary in the fact that your parcels aren't square or right thing.
That's kinda like. Yeah, that's like eight hundred feet, that you gotta, if you gotta.
The, the one I showed you.
In Berkeley, you get the nineteen acre one.
It goes like that.
Yeah.
Right.
And you would think that we can find a way for nineteen acre one for the being, if, if we want to install.
If your land's shaped like this, you gotta come way back here.
Correct.
To get that eight hundred feet, alright.
So, the word reasonable, you know, a lawyer loves that, which is Dickie Ingram reasonable.
Probably not. Probably not.
But I, you know, I own a farm, and I say, well, you know, this thing's four hundred feet from the road, and my neighbor's just past you on the back, so I could be four hundred on the, from the road and eight hundred from my other neighbors, and in the back is up against my neighbor's camp. There's nobody, nobody to say move by a solar panel. So then my set, rear setback may be only hundred feet, then I get, talked to one of the planners yesterday, and his idea regards to setbacks, because you need it, but you allow an owner, that if he wants to do a project, he's got to get a waiver.
From everybody around.
On his neighbors. So like in my case, like in my case, you know, I'm good from the front for the road, because I got a depth.
Right, right.
And I'm good from the sides, because my neighbors are up on the roof.
Right.
So, you know, I've got good setbacks, and then that back one where it's just, just pasture, I go get to that neighbor and say, I'm gonna buy like the setback, you need to sign the waiver for me, if you will, if it doesn't bother you, probably would, you might already wanna put a little solar on here.
Well, one neighbor, one, one neighbor, he says no, and their foil says yes.
Well, then you gotta make setback on that side.
Or how they need to come to a public hearing.
Well, it will be two public hearings anyway.
Well, you can have the exception.
For each project, because it's a special exception.
But is it a special exception if they can do a setback, setback?
It's used by, it's used by special, no, every solar project is a used by special exception, irregardless of whether they exactly perfectly met the ordinance.
Okay.
So they've gotta go through planning, and they gotta come before, before super. So the neighbors are gonna have plenty of opportunities in regards to, you know, whatever the project.
So public notice on that too?
Oh, yeah, all the adjacent property under seven three days.
But also in, in the newspaper or not?
Yes, sir, that's it, no, you've gotta be.
That's it.
It's two weeks.
Four of the state.
One of the other things that the, that the planner said, and I agree with this, and this was Mr. Pritchett.
Yeah.
Did the meeting.
Pritchett.
Pridgen?
Jane Pridgen.
Pridgen?
Jane Pridgen, yeah.
Senior.
Yeah.
So, our ordinance requires impervious services for the roof, so all you did then was create more opportunity for runoff. Whereas if you put gravel, then another place for the water to go into that.
That, that is, uh, that was one of the things we discussed when we were doing this, and I want y'all to know that the person that proposed, when he first proposed setbacks, he did a thousand things, and it was Jeff Lovell. And he was also the one that said he wanted a car.
He wanted what?
He wanted a paved road.
That's who I talked to, that's who I talked to yesterday.
And the reason, and the reason was to get the fire trucks and stuff in there, if you have a fire, you gotta be able to get them in there.
I wouldn't wanna take my fire trucks and sign a sense of glass on fire.
Well, what I'm saying, well, what, see, that's what I think people don't think about, people don't think about what's gonna happen if you do have a fire.
Well, this was Jeff I talked to yesterday.
Right.
And he, he said, after thinking about it, in Mr. Pritchett's comments, that he agreed that they ought to be impervious, impervious, excuse me, pervious services.
Right.
Rather than a, you've already, you've already sped up, you run off on that angle tent.
Oh, yeah.
And it's gonna hit pavement, so you're better off having gravel.
Can we just require them to get a Leeche truck and pump it?
I heard it's easy.
Another big thing on that, that I've looked at, a little bit of research that I've been doing, and I also see that, uh, Jim Pritchett mentioned this too, was agro-solar, where, where you should explore opportunities to, and.
Several locales in the state, they graze sheep underneath solar.
Dominion has a program, pilot program, they've actually got a shepherd, they move sheep around.
Yeah.
It's been going on for a year or so, I don't know how successful the guy is, maybe he's doing it.
Yeah, they're doing that to cover the side I went to.
Sheep.
But it's actually a family farm, and they go and take care of the sheep, they move the sheep.
Or mushrooms or something like that, uh, or potato, like Pritchett said.
Yeah.
That's what's typing there.
No matter what we decide, somebody's gonna not like it.
Yeah, always.
It's, it's a difficult issue, you know, it's my land.
We go down to, um, Dorian Webb said, secure private property rights, I mean, we should be able to put on our land, you know, within reason. I don't want to see a cane from a farm background, I don't want to see thousands of acres of land in desperate. But if we have a person that wants a small scale, that has done due diligence to make sure to run off, that go into an estuary creek, that it's not visible from the road, it is not obtrusive to the neighbors, and they've done that due diligence, I think we could be more flexible with that than small, but other than that.
I think, I think you're exactly a hundred percent right, and the ones that I visit and, and, and saw, they have best management practices in places like water basins that have.
They have to.
Yes, sir, so it's by D E Q regulation they have.
Well, that was, that's what changed, because Governor Norther was only considering the post impervious, and so all those places that you had water and runoff and there's some farms deeply affected with water coming on, the calculation was not made on that glass, the calculation was made on that post.
That's right.
And so then the law, the D E Q made a rule, and then they backed it up a little bit, let people, we have some grandfather, but everybody's following the new rules on their side of the basins, it's calculated off the glass, and so you're much better for water, you're, you're.
Water runoff.
Water runoff control.
Ultimately, it's going into the waterway, you through the creek, it's supposed to seep through the ground, it's gonna run over the top, it depends on how fast it comes, but it's not going directly in there right away, it's not harmful water, it's too much water, too fast.
What do you call it, a burn basically?
And Mr. Collins and I have, have educated ourselves, we both met in transparency with a couple of solar projects, small, and, and it wasn't as basic. But my concern still exists, the, the panel issues, the decomposition.
No one's told.
Nobody can tell us, but it's so new, that's, that's the home one.
Well, what do y'all think about the, the other thing I mentioned the other night about if the technology advances, which I still say, and I'm only talking about this because I believe technology is going to advance, it's not gonna sit still, even on something like this, how do they make it more effective, if they can reduce the size of a panel from that to that, then we should, our ordinance should require them to reduce the footprint of it, if they're still able to pull the same amount of power.
Correct.
I, I think you're opening, you're laying back up, but you're also shrinking what's under panel.
But you may also let them keep the same acreage, if they put more panel on, you keep more power.
Well, if, if the grid can take it.
Right.
Yep.
I have, you know.
Good idea, alright, good idea.
I had things written down, but I couldn't speak the other night, so here's some things that I'm looking at, and I asked this question when Steve had his meeting up in Berkeley, by the fall. They talk about all this revenue that you're gonna get over forty year period, because I've looked and researched and due energy, one of the engineers said, you can expect a life of twenty to twenty five years for the panel, so you can cut that nine or ten million, eleven million, they said you're gonna get over forty, you cut that in time. I also wanna know where's this revenue gonna come from, okay, who owns the panels? Who owns the land?
And they sell these projects.
They sell them, but they put them into individual LLCs, and as a person that deals with LLCs, LLC can disappear tomorrow.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying.
Who owns the panels, who owns the land, who gets taxed for the land, who gets taxed for the panels? I mean, I wanna know where this revenue they say that you can get, where it's gonna come from.
Their, their tool material tax is coming from the landowner, it's coming from the, the actual ground tax is coming from the landowner, so they're receiving income, and some of that's gonna be coming to the kid.
Now, what one of the, what one of the guys said at Steve's meeting was, that the company that's taking a million is gonna own the panels.
I have to read and agree.
Well, that's what they said.
And the landowner is not gonna own the panel.
Correct, this, this is what, this is what they say.
It's a project owner, not the property owner.
So the project, so the land, the property, the real estate's still owned by John Smith.
Exactly.
The panels are owned by Dominion.
Right.
Dominion's paying fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt to the county for the right to have them.
Is that, is that something that?
That's, I've been told that by, that's sixty different.
So you're gonna get, the megawattage is gonna be coming every year.
Correct.
Alright, suppose with the deterioration of these panels, if they're not producing, that's what I'm talking about.
There's a, there's a project up in the mini that never got turned off.
See, that's what I'm saying, now you.
So therefore, none, none of them.
So the county don't get anything. But.
The thing about the poor landowner.
Does the county get anything with improvements on the land, because the land is worth more than that one? So the county, so it's gonna be reassessed, reevaluated, the value of that land to get us up to whatever our tax.
If I was a landowner, and they own my property, I want my land to be, I want my land value to go down, because I don't own those panels. And they, those panels have just.
We draw the questions, Dickie, because that's.
That's what I'm saying.
And your land value may go down, but your, your tools and machinery.
But that belongs, that belongs to Dominion.
But if your land value went down with the compounding of your neighbors' fault too.
That's what I'm saying, and, and it's been shown five to seven percent decrease in value on people that live around.
Wouldn't it be even more important reason then to make sure that even if this ordinance was to say that if the productivity of the panels drops below a certain percentage?
There's some, there's some that have done it just flat feet, just to exist, this is what your fee is.
Yes, not only reducing the footprint, but also keeping the quality of the megawatts.
All the environment stuff, like, you know, I get that, but when people start telling me all this money that we're gonna get, I wanna know where it's gonna come from, and I don't, I don't believe what they're telling me.
Well, I think what Dickie's saying and showing is, it was once upon a time that Philip Mar could shut down a cigarette machine and write off the, write off the revenue, because they shut it down, they choose to shut down, so if they quit making them kilowatts that he's speaking of, then they gonna pay less tax, and they may choose to do that, and they say, we got so much over here, we don't need to do this, and we not paying out of the county a forty hundred dollars, because we decided to shut it down.
And that goes right back to what Greg Wolvan was talking about, the bucket being full, and it's only really pulling from a lot of these farms at two times during the day, the morning when everybody wakes up, then the evening when everybody gets home, because the rest of the time, the bucket's full, it's not gonna overrun.
How much, how much the grid can hold.
Right, right.
And so, when you're not drawing power, then the grid's full, everybody's, everybody, here's going.
And all the.
Is it building up, Bill?
No, there's no jet, when it's not being used. No, there's no batteries.
There's no backup.
Well, see, yeah, listen.
Just use it as it, as it's made in the, in the day.
But some of those, some of those big, uh, sites have batteries.
That's right.
And they've had fires at the battery.
That's right.
And, you know, and it, and when I pulled up Solanescu's project up there, up the road from me, I went to their website, and I saw what they had, and I went to Steve's meeting that night, and they sat down and lied, because I said.
It was half true.
I, I. You're drawing Joe, a substation, and you're drawing Joe batteries, oh, no, we don't have drawing.
And it was, I remember.
And I had it, right there, I printed it out.
Did you tell them?
The next morning, yeah, the next morning, that was off the website, brother.
It was?
Yes.
So, so, so Mr. Chairman, a couple of things that, and I want Greg to tell, speak one more time, then, then we're done with Greg, we'll throw back. But, but let me say this, which, which my light bulb went off when Jerry Spence spoke, and then I spent that, um, Mr. Tote and I looked at, uh, that's, yeah, the small little, I guess that was small.
Solar place.
Solar place, whatever, I can't call it palm, right?
Please don't.
The, 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 the further, the further you do the setback, you're really not giving the small landowner an opportunity.
I agree.
Okay, okay, that's, 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 just, just beware that when you decide you may, the other thing that Mr. Zodi brought to my attention is, we, we gotta color look, we need to put some a little here, if, if, once we adopt the solar, solar ordinance, somebody might start applying, we need an application fee, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
We, we need to adopt some kind of fee, in other words.
How much are we losing possibly on that, a million, I mean, that, that.
So Steve and I, Steve and I talked about.
Just for the first day.
So it's cool, I think the fee is gonna be based on the megawatts. What?
The capability of the.
So not a five, you're talking like.
Minimum, minimum fees, say on a, you know, a three megawatt site, the minimum fee's always three thousand, and then maybe a thousand dollars a megawatt.
That's fair.
Somebody wants to do a hundred, a hundred megawatt, a hundred grand. Now, we can research this and see what everyone's doing.
My opinion is, right now, I would, I wouldn't wanna see anything above forty acres, let's see how it goes first.
You mean forty acres in total?
No, no, I'm talking about forty acres on the panel.
That's what I'm talking about, so a man got a five hundred acre farm, he can put up to forty acres.
Sure he could.
Up to forty acres.
Yeah.
Okay.
My, my, and then we look at, by exception, these smaller areas, it may want to, like you said, nineteen acre, okay, you wanna do nineteen acre, that's under the forty acres, let's see how it affects, and, and eight hundred, uh, foot setback would be.
I think, I, I think, uh, eight hundred foot personally is a blue.
Yeah.
I think we're saying we don't want no panel in the county, I tend to agree with Robert, I'll point on that, and I don't tend to agree with Marty Barrow, but the reason I say that is this, you take a man that's got a hundred acre, me personally, I had a hundred acres, and I traded it for another piece of land, and it was a narrow, long place, in fact, it only had about two hundred and twenty foot of roof front, it went back well over a mile, and it was a hundred and eleven acre. No way I could put a setback, even to get ten percent, ten acres in that panel, it couldn't, couldn't do it, but then the brother, not my brother, but the brother that I bought this property from next door, he too, because he wanted to buy this five hundred acre farm up, he had a hundred acre. His was take, totally different, he had all the road running, it wasn't go, it didn't go very deep, so there, he setback, now he can't meet setbacks in the back. I can meet plenty of setbacks in the back, but it was getting on the side, going back to, if you, if you in agreeance with me doing this, if it's okay with you, sir, because you own the land next to me, if you'll sign off on it, I'll be able to do my project, and he may say, Bo, I don't wanna do that, because I live right there, and every morning I come out there drink my coffee, I gotta look over there at them solar panels, and it ain't far enough for me, you can't meet setback, I don't want you to do. And then that's when the public hearing would, all of them's gonna come into effect with public hearing, but that's when you further discover. I talked to one of the guys on your planning committee, one that's, well, I don't mind telling you, Jeff Lovell.
You're right.
He said I pushed eight hundred, he said I'm back to five hundred, I said that ain't enough, I said Jeff, you need to fence this rethink a little bit more. He said I ain't coming to five hundred, and me and Jeff are friends, we get along great, if I broke down the way waiting, I call Jeff, he's coming to get me, and I'm gonna get him. But I see his point, we don't want, the forty acres thing, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned of keeping large timber companies rocked in and stuff from being able to put five hundred acres on the panel on a three thousand acre track. But here's what, here's what I worry about that day, they can survey parcels of the land off and bust it up, and put it in LLCs and say, well, my two thousand acres now is owned by ten people, they each got two hundred acre, now I put on it.
They gotta file the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah, because they're doing it over what?
Over three lots, I think.
In two lots in one year, you can go two lots in one year, I believe.
Yeah, you can cut, you can cut two lots every twenty four months.
So over time, as they're building it out.
So what they're doing is if they could do that, if that, because I already thought about that, this, this, someone has to, they can come in and do all these lots, just, you know, chop one, chop two up, and then wait two years to chop two more up, and so on and so on, we're talking, you know, twenty three hundred acres, a little bit more than twenty three hundred acres out there, and it could, it could, I, I think there's a lot of issues regarding that. And I would do wanna mention one thing about the taxation, um, we have to think if there's, the method we're gonna use for the taxation, because it's depreciation still, there was stuff going through the G A a couple of years ago, where somebody on that committee was going to do, uh, they're looking at depreciation tables, uh, because that, that capital, whatever it's called, that being maybe the store can help me, but, but when, when you depreciate everything, there's, the, all that equipment gets depreciated.
Right.
So we can't count on that, you know, constant stream of revenue.
And you gotta watch how the language you're wearing, because if they call it a solar farm, then it becomes whether it's a tax, which it really is, it's on a concrete foot, or not a tax, whether it's even applicable to be taxed, so, so a grain over, and I, and this is a prime example, I put up ten thousand or fifteen thousand, which are grains in it, and I leased it, now it was attached to my property. So I called Kristy, it's been a number of years ago, and I called Kristy one day, and I said, Kristy, I can get a tax bill from something that I don't own, I'm gonna buy the lease, I did it for a dollar. She, she dug into it a little bit, and she said, but it's taxed on your property, so the same way with these solar panels, she said, I said, what about this grain over? I'm getting taxed on the grain over, she said, is it, is it attached to it, and it's by the time I own it, I said, it's not attached to it, well, I, she could, she took that off, because that's most.
Yeah, we, we, that's a good point, Mr. Tote, because we have to think about the, how we define structures, structures in the zoning ordinance is essential, and that's usually something that sticks to the ground, permanently sticks to the ground, and these, these panels, these twenty five foot high double pane panels are gonna be, you know, screwed in the ground or whatever, that's sort of, they're, they're doing it a little bit more sustainable way and comfortable.
The one.
So it's all with the fees, you know, okay, and we do that, Mr. Zodi, we recharge its account, see, see how that fees is structured.
Yeah, I, I looked at this two years ago, and I think that was already being done, and we've brought something, uh, before it was repealed, for the order for repeal was made, it's gonna be fifteen hundred dollars, and probably fair enough, I would suggest you guys, uh, double it or triple it, uh, because we need the revenue, that's not a revenue.
And they get big revenue for it, so.
Right.
But if you wanna just kinda reach out and make, just find out.
Yeah, I've already done that, I'll, I'll pull everything on.
Hey, one thing I'd like to make mention to y'all, is I talked to a, a, a person on the planning commission in another county who does, an adjacent county who are live solar, currently have solar, he told me one thing to be sure, the point I give you guys was, they have control over so many acres, more than what the panel was sitting on.
That's right.
And in what they have control over should fall under certain criteria that they fight us against, not to, as in, not with fence, if fence, like, Mr. Bo, Bo and you and I went up there and witnessed the fence very close to the pass, but they actually had control over way back off that fence to meet the muffles and stuff in that.
And then they had those, those trees out there, I guess, was.
They planted them little spotted trees, I tell them, they're like, hey, dude.
They all, they were.
They really were.
That's the problem you got.
So the solar panels killing the little trees.
No, they're little trees they plant and do what?
Yeah, I think that heat caused by the solar panel caused that.
But all jokes aside, what we're doing, slow and steady means, it's a learning experience. The more we learn, the longer we go. I commend Dickie Bowles, our work.
Oh, absolutely.
The planning commission, every month or so, it seems to change. And at the end of the day, it's not about money. Everybody thinks we're all about a month, the money. It's about our children, the people behind, that we don't know what this stuff is putting in our soul.
But on the same token, if we're talking about the money, it's hard to tell a man that he's got a piece of property, that he can get some benefit off of that you can't do it. And he's doing it for the money. What about if this man's taking care of his mother, who's in the nursing home? Or, most of the, I found out that he sold that. That most of the people that really wants them on the property are people that's got big money, because that's how they capture big money. They, like, a lot of them don't even live around.
All right. All right. Well, did y'all have anything else? Well, see, the other thing is, you gotta understand, every one of them is gonna try to sell it. I wanna, what's the definition of a community solar? Are they still hooking into Dominion?
No.
What are they doing?
Well, no, they're, they don't, they have to hook in Dominion, Southside won't hook in.
Right.
So it's just going into local grid. It's a buy-sell agreement. I pay you this much, cause you produce this.
Right. So in other words, he could be going to Richmond, Pad워.
Well, a grid is a grid.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. So actually, other thing people don't, and I, I ran into a guy at, uh, Place of Prue, Wendy's Place. He says, well, I think we're good, because we'll have more power in the county. I said, man, do you understand?
The reason, the whole, the whole reason that this always exists is two reasons, tax credits and subsidies, and the fact that we like these cell phones, those data centers.
Right.
Need so much power. And the other question is, is, is Dominion, is getting ready to permit a new natural gas plant.
Absolutely.
Because they can't keep up with what the data centers need. No matter, you know, no matter what we do down here on these solar farms, solar panels, solar industrial, some projects.
Thank you.
You're not keeping up with the demand, because Northern Virginia keeps pounding in those desks. We're extraordinarily hungry for it.
I'm gonna say this, my brother Mark's on that solar thing. One, I hear the citizens of my community who don't want solar. They said, say no to solar, Bo. And I mean good citizens. I mean ones that I look up to, cause I look up to all my peers, and I hear, I definitely hear. Two, it's hard, I tell them, I said, it's very hard to tell a man, you gotta go on your land, if you can't mine it, because the county says you can't mine it. But it does need to be criteria, cause if we didn't for the, for housing residential areas, we have setbacks that gotta be met, so you gotta implement, implement something to work with these people on it. The third thing is Dominion don't get about a twelve percent of its electricity. Twelve percent of Nottaway County folks who use electricity are on Dominion.
That's right.
Southside Electric is not interested at this time. They're not looking to come in and put those solar panels up, so at the very worst, worst stage that I can think of. If twelve percent of the people in Nottaway County are, are, are supplied by Dominion Power, and only four or five percent of the land that is gonna need a certain criteria. That we can't use, it's, it'll be very little bit light.
All right, well, if y'all.
Self limiting.
Yeah. If y'all don't have anything else on that, then.
Mr. Chairman, I have two quick things. Okay, uh, the first thing, if I hear my direction quick, um, correctly, check the adjacent fees, see if there's changes last time we did.
And taxes.
And taxes?
Yeah, like machine.
Who's, is the owner being taxed, the prime management degree, who's, who paying the tax?
Yep. It was chairman to piggyback on what Mr. Zodi just brought up. I, I want us to make sure we understand the public hearing clock, I call it. So we've had the public hearing, you, you, I take it the board is waiting on, see what the planning commission will recommend. And I believe we have sixty days to either adopt it or, so, you know, I'm just, let's let you know, probably, we will know really what the state is gonna do sooner or later. And, um, so, I know Mr. Ingram had, had it, had, he was very, he was ambitious trying to get something moving, but y'all still wanna listen to the planning commission first, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask this question. If something has changed and the ordinance has been presented, you have to have an untotal, I mean, you have to know.
I think if you, if it's substantial, uh, it's like re-zonage, and I, I think that's why we need to turn, you know, in on this discussion at some point. Because, look, if you, if you create more, if it's a more intense, you do have to have a rehere for like a reset.
Right.
But Greg, if, if you lower, and I, I, I encourage the planning commission to rethink the buffer zone of the vegetation as well as the setback. But you say a more intense, but if they go from eight hundred feet to say four hundred feet, or five hundred feet. But that would be intense to demand it to one party and not to the other, so it's still intense.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, the, I would consider as the use and not a design standard, I don't know how to say this, um. I, I get caught up in zoning blingo, so.
That's what I'm saying. If, if somebody don't want it, if they don't want solar, and they're saying you go eight hundred foot to, to four, five hundred foot, do we need to have, do they have to have?
I think if you said, no solar, then, then you're.
There you go.
But just us tweaking, we do that all the time.
And we did that in the comp plan too. You made changes there.
So I think.
It's kinda like the panel thing too. That, that panel thing would be more, it's, it would, would be more intense on the companies. Like if the technology changed, that would be more intense on the companies. That is probably, definitely a question we have, should ask in that term.
What about it being permissible that, that like one project called it Ludenberry County, a developer got it done, got all the, everything done. And as soon as they got permitted everything, they sold.
Exactly.
They sold it to another, another person.
That's what they, that's what they do. It's, it's got a, the, the special exception permit, set the rules for the operation of that. Now, on some permits, if it's sold, then you have to get a new permit. But they're selling, you know, drinking water LLC.
Yeah, that's it.
So the owner's still the same, still drinking water LLC, so they avoid having to get a new permit. So they're still operating under the original permit. That time that you had issued that permit, you can set rules.
But if you issued it to the LLC, they're selling the LLC.
Right, but this LLC is still owns the permit.
Well, that, that's. So they just sell the whole LLC.
Yeah, but then that brings you to the question, the bonding and stuff for decommission.
Exactly.
They're still, it's still under the same bond. They're, they're still gonna add.
Well, we.
Every five years, that kind of bond gets looked at.
And the only bond that LLC has listed on that bond.
Correct.
So it carries over.
Right. And then you get to the end, and you got your bottom money.
He's on vacation. He's coming back next week.
He's on strike.
They got your bottom money. The LLC says, oh, well, we'll back up, we make some charitable, leave this beer. And then the county's got the bottom money to decommission, and nobody will take their panels. So you got your money.
That's right.
You got a bunch of panels with concrete in the ground.
You wanna take care of that?
Yeah, but what do you do with it? If nobody's taking panels? Just cause you have the money.
Can you put them in a landfill?
They say, they say they got recycled some of them, but I ain't seen.
There's two of them.
Where they located.
The ones in Texas, the ones in New Jersey.
There's one in, I thought, Georgia as well.
You know, I would really, Bill Aitlaw stayed in the, being made in China, and Bill Aitlaw brought some really good points up. But if China's the only place that they're made, I mean, ideally, I like my boots be made here, yes, in D-Top, by the way, in Texas. But we were, but most stuff that we look at is made in China, unfortunately.
It is.
But that's a federal level that you gotta, you gotta charge a little money maybe anyway, that's.
Just to work, the last one I had, um, I had a MS Teams meeting, well, two things, real quick. MS Teams meeting, uh, for the developers, um, it's ample form, they're gonna represent a, uh, uh, what's the guy's name? He's, um, he's on Rocky Ford Road, um, and he spoke at the meeting.
Dennis Tane.
Dennis Tane. They asked if they could do a presentation, and I said, that's not usually a thing, but I will ask if the, if the board's interested, and see how they do that.
No, if they didn't do a presentation, then you guys.
Everybody, we got entirely too much, you know, problem. Let them go through the planning commission, they want an application.
Right, now, I don't mind, Mr. Tane called me personally, said, hey, you want any lunch? I can tell you about this project. I'm fine with that. Anybody who wants to call, call any of the supervisors, I believe, I will speak for y'all. But anybody that wants to say, I wanna work on this, can I, can I show it to you, or take a ride, I'm all for that.
Yeah, so am I.
Yeah, I, well, and you saw what his big issue was, the setbacks, so that was his main comment. Although I said, I just want you guys to pick up the, with the, the issue fee for, uh, the campground, uh. They're, they're more likely, uh, after you talk to Church Tree Timber, uh, Glen Royal Land Manager is going to, um, they'll probably just move off. Because of, I told them that there's a strong sense that we need to have, uh, sanitary sewer on the site. And Glen, he's representing, well, as a land manager, he's representing Church Tree Timber, but he, but on the side, he goes, Greg. Now, are we gonna, is that gonna be done to everybody else in this county? Are we gonna make every other hunt camp, put in sanitary sewer if they're all the time? I just want y'all to think about that.
You lost me, I don't even.
Look, what you're saying is, these people are living, you know, they got the, the other hunt clubs that have like a clubhouse. But they don't.
Right.
They, they, they come to the clubhouse, you know, saying, and then they go home.
My personal hunt club, they, we have the clubhouse, but we do have three hunters. They bring their campers for six weeks for the hunting season. And they, you know, pump them on.
Is that here or in the county?
This is, no, this is Dan Sussex.
I was gonna say, give me that address.
These people.
But they.
Little male of that.
Right, they don't, these trailers go back home.
Now, if you're there three sixty-five, you need, you need to follow.
And that's why I told them, I told them, there's, uh, uh, I spoke to Christie about this, and she goes, yeah, they're here, you're around, they have to pay local taxes, they have to register here. So what might happen, and I'll let Glen know, is, you know, well, do we, do we allow them, Church Tree Timber, that site, to allow two or three campers or up to four campers?
Well, the problem is, is then you gotta be out there, you know, code enforcement's gotta be out there to keep track.
So what, what happens when I get another hunt boat? Because the people who are gonna be kicked off there are gonna be telling me where all the hunt camps.
Wait, hey, let me ask you this, and I'm just spinning in.
Case by case basis.
Hmm?
Case by case.
What about to be considered a resident? Don't you have to get your mail ordered twenty, it is something, twenty seven days out of thirty? Or something to, something to that, I had an experience with that one time, that, so if they ain't over that for.
We're seventy-two hours to establish residence, I think it is, and then start, or start receiving mail.
That, I just want. It's, it's, it's a, which is twenty-seven nights and three of the thirty.
Yeah.
So there, so that goes to seventy.
You're trying to, you're, if you find the same scenario, you, you treat them the same. So if you find ten campers that are sitting there twelve months a year, and the guys are coming and going every weekend, that's their vacation, then they gotta have, you gotta file a health call.
You something with this?
If you, if you got a guy that's there for a week with a camper, then he moves and pumps it into his seventy-nine, you know, that's.
That's a valid. I'm sorry, if you got two or three people year round, and I, I just, I don't wanna put any bad image in anybody's head, where are they going to the restroom at, and where's that runoff going?
Well, and if, if it's a camper, if it's a camper, it's got a holding tank on it, they can get in and come hunting.
Right.
Yeah, but, um.
I know a hunt club, I know a hunt club in Ludenberry that's got two forty yards, that, that's on site.
If that was, if that, if that site.
These guys got forty yards too.
If that site wasn't near seven twenty-three, no matter what.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Really? It could have been back behind.
But there was, there was a neighbor, there was a neighbor that, that talked about this.
Yeah, wow.
Seven years.
Okay, well, I just, you know, I wanted to express some, from a zoning perspective, the issues I'm gonna be facing, you know, when that happens. That's all.
All right. All right, well, guys, um, we'll, we'll move on to comments from board members, uh, Mr. Collins.
Well, our solar joint public here, I've spoken with, followed with five different citizens that were there and that also watched it. And they were very complimentary about how organized it was, how polite everyone was, everybody got to say their piece. And, uh, they were very pleased with how we were able to have a good meeting for everybody here to get, thank you, Nottaway.
And Mr. Collins, the, um, on Mr. Perry, I thought Mr. Perry did a good job, sort of, and Mr. Walker, you know, he yielded Mr. Perry. But the last two, I, I told him, and it's okay, but Mr. Perry handled it very well. The last two was not, we didn't miss them, they didn't sign up. So I think he felt obligated, he, he let one, so he had like the other one.
They got there, didn't.
Yeah, he, he, but what Mr. Perry did say is, did we miss anybody?
Yeah.
And he was looking to make sure that we didn't skip somebody following, and, and that guy, that person raised their hand, and then he got, anyway, but it worked out.
Yeah, so, thank you, Nottaway County, it was a good meeting, citizens of the region.
Um, Chris Ingram?
Well, I think we had a good meeting the other night. I don't know whether it's time to talk about animal shelter or not, we just pulled off on it.
They could lose sleep over it.
Okay.
Right, no, it's not that bad. We, we, we have worked, just a quick, we've met with Chris Phillips, he's on board with us, to say that. Um, we're looking at a, we, we, we do need to give a budget number, but before we give a budget number, we're gonna try to run it down, challenge, um, CARE, the CARES group. Um, one thing to come out, that means I think it's gonna be very helpful, I think you had already mentioned it, and they must, I don't know, I don't know who all mentioned, I know her, you. We may have to hire our hourly project manager to be the liaison between CARES as that building goes up. But we'll pay for, we'll pay our part, but.
Well, not only job for that, they could also have the job, you know, if you put it up like you and I would put it up with common sense, we would sub a lot of stuff out, different things, and they could also oversee that. Versus wanting to get a turnkey job.
So, and I don't, I don't know how that's gonna work yet. Because here's the problem, how, how is CARES gonna give us money?
Or is I'm gonna turn, they don't give us any money, they go into the building after it's done, and, and.
They were totally organized to be.
Suppose we felt the infrastructure was simple, but just, I'm going to, with, without any cages. And then we go to CARES and say, you build a cage for five thousand dollars, and, and, and then we'll put your, your family's name on that cage.
That, that was one of.
You with me?
That's a bit like, like, you did a brick, right.
They, they talked about naming opportunities, but we need someone, like liaison, a project manager, that sit down and say, okay, our construction expectation is this. I, I don't fill in with.
And I don't think you're looking at the one ten to twenty hours, maybe a week, maybe, I mean, not much, ten hours.
And yours is a question of, as things are happening, logistics, timing.
Right.
Cause you may not be able to do something that they wanna do if we don't do during.
So, so, so what I'm, what you'll see on the budget, what we're looking for is, is with Mr. Phillips, he's out of his scope, so we, he's gotta give us a new scope of work, okay? Cause he's done his part, now he's going back to the prints, getting, getting bare minimum, you know, example, we're not gonna have a drain line in every cage. We're gonna have a trough that goes down when they spread. You see what I'm saying? You're not gonna have fifteen traps, okay? So that's just.
Better anyway.
That's right, that's what, that's right, right. And, and my, and my, Mike Gentry's in there, and he said it is, he said, all you gonna do is have stopped up drains.
That's right.
So he's gonna get back, he's gonna, so we got, so you're gonna see that in the budget, and, and just, this is just, this is just Steve Born's clock. Maybe, we can put it out to bid, my, my, I'd say the first of January of, of next year, you know, of twenty, January twenty twenty-five.
One of the things he said was, he begged us to consider not to rebid it, put it to you.
Yes.
Even going, what, two months later, three months?
Yeah, 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 because.
It went, it went a million dollars.
Yeah, you would, you put a sour taste, but you put a sour taste in good contracts. In other words, you bid on it, and we said, ah, we're not doing it, let's do it again. So now you're not gonna bid on it.
No, I'm, I'm mad about it.
You're mad about it.
Yeah.
Then the next, got, the next contract did it, and then you, and it was less than a million dollars, and then you still didn't do it.
Your project manager, your project manager.
You're right, so he's extra mad. So we just keep on bidding.
Your project manager.
Wait a while.
And what we also, you don't see if he's staying in the stuff here, cause you don't have the time to do all that.
Yeah, I know, right, right, but, but I think it's.
Your project manager has to.
They'll, they'll do this back, right?
Right.
And should not be involved with.
That's what he said, he said.
Part of raising the money.
Yeah.
We never identified. They, and I appreciate, because we never identified in life, they're wrong.
Yeah, and what we'll do is, we got, we got months to get that to go, but we'll do it, the personnel committee, we'll actually, if I, if, I've, I've gotten two names so far. And we'll bring them in and see what they'll be.
Here's another thing I'm able to think about, the project manager for all these projects moving forward.
That's what John.
You talking about one take, you all of them?
Yeah, cause I mean, they're, they're.
Get you a smart one.
Well, what I'm saying is, it's gonna be moving on, it's not all gonna be.
Oh, one can, when the animal trap is old, when it's not gonna be done.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. You find somebody that, that, that you know that can continue to do this work, whether it's overseeing the security upgrades, cause that's gonna probably be the first.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you got that, and the other thing this does.
You're talking about changing.
Yeah, I, and right now, I, I, let's use this as, let's dip my foot in the water, see what happens, cause I, I, you know, the, the animal shelters don't make big, but I hear you, you're right. And that's maybe something we can do later on, I got you, I hear you. Um, uh, we, we, we're, we're advertising for maintenance lead technician, not a supervisor, uh, we, we. We, we, we're, we're advertising for maintenance lead technician, not a supervisor, uh, we, we've changed the verbages on that, and, um.
Well, that salary savings can take care of your manager. That salary savings can take care of your manager, instead of doing a supervisor, you do a tech.
But that, and we go back to policies that we don't have.
You got to demand, if you're somebody with concrete experience. I can't be able to know that, and if I had time, I'd challenge any of the project managers you got. You know why? Because I'm a, I'm a businessman with common sense, and I see that very much.
Well, one thing like, and we talked about it, so you know, just a little thing, like, and I, and Mike Gentry was good to have in that room. Mike Gentry says, well, I, I read somewhere else, well, you don't have to, some, the animal shelters don't have to have a hundred percent, uh, air turnover. I, I read they got fifty percent, he said, you want me to check into it, I said, yeah, that's it. Right, we wanna keep hearing, and do we have that three-phase mode, can we go to the single phase?
We would have built one in our surrounding area in the last.
You've got to bid them.
But to reach out. The whole goal is to cut costs, not to stop the project.
But, but here's the thing, so here's what, what, what rebel Mr. Crowe, and we gave him the direction for this. If we change the footprint at all, we gotta go back to D Q and pay fees. So we are going to keep the same footprint, but put in there what the Virginia code requires. It's fifty percent, one drain, uh, uh, we don't need what, fourteen cages, but hey, let's, just don't put, let's put the, and say, hey, can y'all build the cages for us? Uh, let's, 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 that's where that got, that's where that, that, that person could be very important to me to go, hey, with, they ready for the cages? Y'all wanna give some money to us, you know, whatever.
From my understanding, Chris is the one who said the thing about, I think Blacksburg got away with the fifty percent.
Yeah. Right, that's right, that's right.
He said fifty percent, he said, you have to state vet to approve it, same thing with, uh, the cage, uh, something else, he said. State vet will, oh, the, the one drain. State vet will approve that.
You put a big enough line in, that, the drain.
They will, they will approve that, so little things, and we also talked about getting rid of the asphalt.
The solid, the solid, it's get rid of asphalt, the solid, the solid port, in other words, you got a roof on it, so it's basically gonna be a carport, you pull the truck up in there. Now, fix it where they can close it in if they want to, with a fence, with a key, that's right, if, if, if CARES wants to do that, you see what I'm saying?
Do extras.
But do the back of the truck, then get the dog out that they have in the truck, or they'll be out of the way, they will have walls. You know, so that's another, so many hundreds of.
Yeah, but.
Fence cases, dog escape at the handle.
Oh, yeah, they'll have.
So, and, not, not, I don't know if it was you or not had the conversation, I'm, I'm not trying to put, put you on board, I mean, but.
Put me on board, I mean.
But I, I'm trying to remember the conversation, was it with you when we were, that we discussed about the old building, is that?
We did, you and I, we, you and I discussed that.
All right, is that completely off the table, because we are still.
It's gotta be the closest footprint, we have to go to D E Q.
But see, I don't think you changing anything on the ground, so footprint already exists, that's for.
You're talking about footprint and square footage and locale.
No, 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 the footprint that they're talking about, D E Q has approved the footprint because of the groundwork. The old building, there's still footprint to alter, you follow what I'm saying, everything will be, so, so that's, that's part of the conversation that.
He said, I think the price was three hundred thousand.
But you don't want more changes, incur more costs and drag it in.
Well, basically, what I gotta do then, the architect's gotta.
Hey, you can put that building up brand new for us.
No, not if you.
It, it, he, he said the site.
That building right up there on the right, where it sits today, you can put it up for less than three hundred thousand.
Yeah, he's talking about a shell building.
This is what Mike Gentry said, and he agreed with it. Site work, we're looking at a site work on it, somewhere between a half million, eight hundred thousand dollars, site work on it. Okay, move it there, yeah. And I don't know what a mill is doing, maybe, that might be just the building, and somebody else is doing the site work, you see what I'm saying, I don't, you know, I don't know that.
And I'm, I'm gonna just go ahead and, y'all be mad at me on YouTube. I'm sick of seeing that we're not building the building, I've seen it out on Facebook, all these people. We are going to build the building in Burkeville. But we can't build it until we get a budget, we can't get a budget until we get a drawing from an architect to tell us how much it costs.
Yeah, we're working.
So all these folks that are round about it, that are killing us, we have to make this methodical decision. Because we're trying to cut costs.
Well, where does that information come from?
People blabbing on Facebook.
No, 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 it's something leading that, it's something leading to the blab.
I want the general public.
Well, I take responsibility for part of it, because I saw somebody breaking the water, breaking the ground for the water fight, when they don't even know where, now you're talking about using their own building.
But who reported that?
Oh, the local newspaper, but if I was the reporter, I'd do the same thing, cause I want to say a paper.
But we're gonna build it in Burke, we appreciate what CARES group is doing, they raised an ex.
Have, have, have we ever had a motion made in a, in a vote that we're gonna build this thing in Burke? What that required?
Yeah, we did.
No, we did not?
We did not.
We had, yeah, the old board did, that's what I'm saying, I made the motion.
You're talking about the three point eight though, that was the budget.
Was it the budget or the actual place to build the building?
I think it was just the budget.
In the minutes that Mr. Kelly shared with me, when you said we'll put it in Burke, I said the old board, not the new board, it was.
Oh, okay, all right.
In the minutes.
Well, then it's already been voted upon.
Right, and right, Mr. Kelly, am I right?
I made a motion, Bo.
They accepted the land.
So they accepted the land, and they paid for the water line, but they never said, yeah, we done all this, so really, they should have had a vote to say, it is going to Burkeville. That is our decision, providing Mr. Bowles will give us the land and CARES do what they said they did.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't that defined.
It wasn't that defined, when that, it sounded to me was open, they just said that they accepted the land, so really, if they accepted the land, can they sell it?
Well, you'd have to look at the conditions. Yeah, and I guess you'd have to be.
With the expectations.
We wouldn't screw them out of them.
We don't want to backtrack enough that we have to do all these expensive studies and stuff.
You have stock in any media right?
We may have to read the funny paper on Sunday if you get.
Give us some time, give us some time.
Mr. Ingram, was that, was that all you had? All right, Ms. Lauren?
Uh, just want y'all to know that, um, Mr. Bowen and I met today, we are getting involved with budget meetings, finance meetings. Um, first one's gonna be the twenty-eighth, we're rolling on budget, budget requests are starting to come in. Working on policies, procedures, as well, not only with, with personnel, policies and procedures, once we get that in place. Then we'll be on the road. The right, frame on the track.
It'd be great.
All right, Mr. To.
Um, I think we had a really good, uh, public meeting the other night, Tuesday night, with the public, as well as the board members and the planning commission, it was running really well. Uh, Mr. Perry, I think, done a phenomenal job, he's a neighbor of mine, and, um, revisiting, uh. Project managers, managers, or manager in the board. If I were to erect a new feeding facility to hide cattle in, the first thing I'd want to do is go visit some. Whether that be in Kansas or Pennsylvania or. That holds true for the, the court security to see how other candidates are doing, it holds true for the animal shelter to see how other candidates are doing. And, and in doing so, you will find the mistakes that they made, because they already done it, and there will always be mistakes, things that they wish they could have changed. As well as the solo candidates that already have, because they may have some ordinances in place that they thought was a little bit overdone or underdone. And I think we as a board should be able to, it can be one-on-one, it could be two of us. I don't know with the law from this, I know that three of us are quorum, but I don't think anything would inhibit us from meeting at a solar farm. Or animal shelter as a board and looking.
That's right, cause you're discussing county business, you just advertised that we're gonna be at a location traveling together on a certain date.
I think, I'm encouraged us to do that, especially something that we don't have any, we, we would rather learn by somebody else's. And experience than us, and we will still have some things we would really have changed. And I think we ought to go business about locality, plus, and, and I know we didn't talk much about the landfill, I get tired of listening to about the landfill sometime. Likewise, on the landfill, we need to visit some of these collecting stations and, and see what they would have done differently, they may have said. One thing about it, the, the two open ends, I heard that engineers said by having two open ends and just closing down both sides, they said, don't never face it. North, east, west, or north side, they may say because the trash goes, like, we gotta hide somebody putting that thing in the trash.
It'd be fenced.
You know, something that, well, you gotta go pick it up against the fence.
That's right.
But what I'm saying, little things like that make a big difference. You know, Christie said earlier, she was a visual person. If we went to look at other facilities, court security, solar stuff, animal shelter, we would get the visual part of it.
We might pull up one, and they say, hey, you can't have that, that great, that crate drain.
Right, right.
Because the dog get the foot on it in that thing, therefore, the state don't like that right now.
Well, just like Mr. Gentry, he made a point, you know, and, 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 and Chris will figure that out, so you, here's the front of the building. And you, and you, you kind of understand the lay of the land up there, I don't know if you've been up there, not, but, the lay of the land up there is front of the building, well, they got the bathroom way back here. All right, so what, what Gentry is saying is, why you got the bathroom way back here, I gotta run a water line way up under the concrete over here. Put it, put the bathroom up front, but all the pipe and the water, everything is in one spot, you know? But, but, but I get you, that's. My, my Gentry is, uh.
He way over there.
Used to be. He's still on all that's proppant on the right-hand side when you go into, uh, Kimber.
Kimber.
Yep.
That might be a man for your project, man.
But he did recommend another person.
Yeah, he did.
If he's really telling.
Boy, fellas, it's personnel again, and when you put a job position out in the paper, you can't have somebody in there.
Right, nobody, no specific person, man, but I can, I can have a, I can have an agenda, have my agenda.
No, no, he, he recommended a consultant, that's what he recommended, you can do that, he recommended a consultant.
Steve, Steve, what I'm saying is, if a person is that good, they doing it for themselves. Or either they made so much money, they don't need no more money, or either they retired. Cause otherwise, you're not gonna get somebody smart enough to do it.
Yeah, you're right.
It's gonna take a smart person to do it, and they gotta head drive in one.
I agree with what's saying, that putting in front of you, the vision is better than learning.
I think we need to go do some visits. And I'm only available to do that on about six two down a month.
But I'll start, look, we got summer time to work.
Mr. Bowen, did you have anything?
Nah, I thought we was gonna be out early, but I had no idea Mr. Kelly was gonna talk so much. Well, she's, she forgets, that's the problem.
The only thing I got, guys, of course, is, is the meets went well, the feedback from the citizens has been great. Again, um, I, I, I love the energy from this, from this new board, I would encourage everybody, Monday night, to attend that planning commission meeting. You're not, if you, if all of us attend, just don't discuss anything, because you, you can be in the same place at the same time without an advertisement. Yeah, seven o'clock, because. Uh, planning is gonna be over at the courthouse.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and it's about, um, it's about something that, um, the subdivision. And, um, I just want y'all to know that some of the board members sitting in this room tonight is under attack. Messages came to me today, so they're digging into our personal backgrounds, looking for anything, um, and, uh. I'll tell, and, and I'll state this for the record, the federal government has not told me I've done anything wrong. The state government has not told me I've done anything wrong, nor have the towns, nor have the counties said I did anything wrong. If I've done anything wrong, tell me, and I'll correct it, I've done nothing facetious, but dig all you want, brother. Dig all you want, good luck, and I'll be sitting here waiting when you find nothing. And if you find something, let them tell me I'm wrong, I'll fix it. Anybody else got anything? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
All the favor, second probably by standing up. Y'all can have a discussion, let them step aside.